According to the open public meetings, Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the planning board of the township of Franklin has been provided. Will you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Mr. Coble. Mr. La Court. Ms. MacGyver.
Here.
Mr. Metler.
Here.
Mr. Pettit.
Here.
Mr. Stevens. Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Alderman.
Here.
Mr. Oniaka.
Here.
Chairman Ursini.
Here.
Okay. We have minutes? Okay, then I guess we're not going to do them. Do them next time. Discussion, vouchers, January retainer for the planning board attorney, Martin Murphy, eight three, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Stormwater? We're going to do stormwater? Storm. Carl.
Turn the mic on, Carl, and introduce yourself.
And swear.
Carl Howke, Franklin Township Engineering, Assistant Township Engineer. Good evening, Chairman, Board members. Here tonight, again, to discuss proposed amendments to our stormwater ordinance, which is Section 330. Currently, our ordinance is modeled after the state where major developments which create more than a quarter acre of more impervious are regulated and certain infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure, has to be installed and designed for each site. Tonight, I'm here to talk about minor developments, which would be, as defined, a development that creates a thousand square feet or more of impervious, but less than the quarter acre of a major development. Typical type of applications to this would be building permits for a single-family lot, a single individual lot, and we would be requiring them to install certain types of stormwater measures to basically control the runoff on lots. We have put into the ordinance design standards and updates for the definitions, as well as, I guess, the process to go through any kind of waivers or exceptions. With that, we also are amending our existing ordinance, which we created, or I guess amended back in 2010 regarding the permit fees for the rain gardens, which we are pushing for, as well as drywells, for minor development applications. Questions?
Questions from the board at all?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to...
Don't go into detail, other than, I'm a single-family home, I'm going to build a house. It's two thousand square feet, I've got a driveway, that's another thousand square feet, let's say. What are the requirements in a minor development, as you call it, or whatever you call it? What is generally the requirement for a guy building a house on a single lot with a driveway and so forth?
Correct.
Probably more than the coverage.
Drywell, rain garden. We set the design standards where they have to do design calculations based on a three-inch rainfall, rather than the full hundred-year storm. This is somewhere around a little less than a twenty-five-year storm that they design to. And in that, we set, again, the rate and volume controls that we need them to design the site for. So, basically, they're controlling their roof leaders into a drywell, they're directing their roof impervious and runoff into like a rain garden or a swell area, and keeping it on the property, infiltrating it into, you know, existing groundwater.
So, at some point in time, since the homeowner can get a permit to build a house, and he can draw his own plans, actually, under the current laws, how does he do the drainage calculations? He's not an engineer, he's not an architect, he just designs his own house and he builds it. I mean, that's how it used to be. What do you, what kind of...
They would have to hire an engineer in order to do design calculations for the facility.
So, if he's, it's going to be more cost for the homeowner. Okay? I just wanted to...
Any other questions from the board?
Yes.
Mr. Metler.
Okay, I would imagine the effectiveness of a drywell would depend upon the permeability of the soil.
Correct.
And so, would they also have to do a percolation test?
They would have to do a typical perk test, as you would for a septic field.
Yeah, so...
Let me ask you one more question, though. Could they pipe their leaders... Oh, I'm sorry, Bob.
No, 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 that's okay.
Could they direct their leaders, could they pipe their leaders to a storm sewer in the street? Or an inlet, like running a header pipe or something, rather than, because like Bob said, the impervious, the permeability of the soils around here is not too reliable.
They vary considerably.
Yeah, I know. Well, I know that, but you hit the guy that has a solid shale. What's he going to do?
Well, there are, again, there are design exceptions.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, there are other means that we could work with the individual, specific lot, in order to have them comply with the ordinance.
So, the permeability test of some sort, and a lead, with an engineer to design his runoff calculations and so forth.
Correct.
Now, Carl, isn't this really codifying our practice that we've been following, you know? And I just want to make that clear, this isn't something new, it's something that's being done, we're just...
Well, it's part of your regime, okay, let's put it that way.
Yeah, as part of an older ordinance that we have, the developer or the builder is required to, you know, retain as much as he can on and not impact the adjacent properties. This would codify, as Vince said, what we're doing now, requiring now. And most single-family homeowners or developers really don't have problems with this, they just want, they just want to know what they have to do. They'll do whatever they have, you know, they need to do in order to, you know, get the house and sell the house, or what have you.
Carl, to what degree is this, where do these requirements come from?
The requirements came from, we modeled this from another Somerset County town, and there are a few different towns throughout the state that do this in order to control runoff on sites.
Any other questions from the board? If there aren't, Vince, do we need to...
You could just ask if the board is okay with it by affirmation, and if so, then we can forward it to the council. And then you'll get it back again, as, because it's a development ordinance, but just for a recommendation.
I'll just make a motion to forward it, and then we can just do it by affirmation?
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion to forward these recommendations to the stormwater management ordinance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Me, one, me.
Okay, one opposed. Jim? Abstained? Okay, motion does carry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carl. Okay, the one and only hearing tonight is Redeve Group LLC, PLN 130001, and Somerset Douglas, continuation of that development.
Peter Lanfrith, 428 Elizabeth Avenue, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is an application for an amended site plan for a project that was formerly known as Somerset Douglas, now known as Somerset Gate. The amendments to the site plan are fairly minor. However, there are a couple other waivers and amendments to the old approval that we are seeking this evening. So I would like to spend a moment trying to go back and bring the board up some history of this project, and how it came about, and why we are seeking some amendments to some previous conditions of approval. I have taken the liberty to mark certain exhibits, A1 being the approved plan for Somerset Douglas, A2 being the major change to the Somerset Douglas project, or now the Somerset Gate project that we are proposing, and A3 is actually a revision of A2 as a result of a meeting that we had today with the township. In about 2000, there was a project at the intersection of Henry Street and Route 27, which was originally office condos. That project was then converted to residential condos, there were thirty-eight of them, under the name of Melissa Meadows. Those units are all built. The developer of Melissa Meadows subsequently purchased the adjacent land, which is the Somerset Douglas property. At that time, the adjoining property, one of the sites was the HK Tire site, if you recall, and then there was the Socorro Motors site on the corner. He purchased that parcel, and it was the intent at that time to develop that project, merge the two projects into one overall project, and have one condominium association, and have everything run by one organization, and basically combine the two projects. As it turned out, that didn't work out that way. Somerset Douglas, which was in the redevelopment area, and is still in the redevelopment area, started its journey towards the approval process. Melissa Meadows was built. Somerset Douglas was a designated redeveloper for the Socorro Motors and the HK Tire site, and in 2004, received site plan approval. The site plan approval was for 114 condominium units. One of the other conditions, which was a subject, or will be a subject of discussion this evening, also provided that we have an interconnection between Somerset Douglas and Melissa Meadows, based on that original intent of making it all one project. That was one of the conditions that was imposed by the planning board in 2004, and it was a condition, quite frankly, that we had requested. Fast forward to a few years ago, the developer of Somerset Douglas lost the property after construction commenced. The property went back to the bank, and ultimately, Redeve Group purchased the property. The redevelopment agreement that existed with the redevelopment authority also, therefore, died when the owner of the property, the old owner, lost the property. Redeve Group acquired the property in the summer of this past year. Since then, we have been involved with the redevelopment authority to enter into a new redevelopers agreement with the redevelopment agency. That agreement was adopted and was voted on at their meeting last month, and we are now the designated redeveloper of the project. When my clients took over the project and having discussions with the redevelopment agency, there were discussions on how maybe there could be some improvements to the project, and how some things could be changed. Sometimes with the passage of time, things that were deemed to be important back then may not be as important now. So there are a couple things that we are proposing, and I'll sort of outline them, and I will then have the engineer present testimony in a little bit more detail, of the changes that we are proposing this evening. The first change, if you look at Exhibit A1, at the intersection of Douglas and Route 27, there were two buildings that were proposed. Those were part of the 114 units. Those buildings, as part of an agreement that was entered into in 2004, were going to be designated as affordable housing units. The original developer was not required to provide any affordable housing, but had agreed to provide eight affordable housing units. There was no requirement for the payment of an affordable housing fee. We had some discussions with the municipality after we acquired the property, and in particular with Mr. Healy. The redevelopment authority was looking for more open space and more green space. The townships from 2004 to now, their position regarding the need for affordable housing units has changed, and so one of the discussions we had was to eliminate the eight affordable housing units at that corner, and to convert it into green space. In return for that, however, we had agreed that with respect to all of the other units that we are building, we will pay the affordable housing fee, which the township has in place, based on the sales price of, or the assessed value, actually, of the units. So, the first thing that we are seeking tonight is to amend our site plan to eliminate eight residential units. So that's number one. We would agree, as part of that elimination, to the payment of the affordable housing fee. The second issue, as I indicated, the original intent was to connect the two developments, the Somerset Douglas Development and Melissa Meadows. In the recorded documents of Melissa Meadows, there is an easement that shows connecting the two projects. In reviewing what has happened today, Melissa Meadows is a developed and established community. It was our feeling that rather than connect these units, is to keep the road in place, but make it an emergency access only. The thought process there was that by making this interconnection results in a potential problem between maybe the Melissa Meadows project and the new Somerset Gate project. If something is going on, or somebody's having a party at, within the development of Somerset Gate, and perhaps they're having difficulty finding parking, if we provide a cross-access easement, if you know to the rear of our property is a fairly large parking lot, I can envision somebody going over and parking in the adjoining development. So it was our thought that we should keep the emergency access, or keep the easement, but not make it an easement, so that the residents can freely travel between the two developments, but save that only for emergency access. There are benefits for that, and those were discussed when we reviewed that issue with The third issue, and I'll have our engineer present the testimony, was that we redesigned the entrance to the project. When we first developed the project as Somerset Douglas, it was not a gated community, it was open access to the project. The new developer has decided to put a grand entrance to the project in order to be able to make it more attractive and more marketable, and to create gates at the entrance to the community, and I'll describe through the engineer the change there. I am going to hand out a colored rendering of the new entrance, which will also tie into the fourth thing, which is creating a new wall along the property on Douglas. As I indicated, that's another change, which we will describe through testimony from our new site engineer. Another change is we have redesigned the fence along Somerset Street or Route 27. The fence was originally a straight vinyl fence, it's still going to be a vinyl fence, except we're going to have indentations in it, so to break up the look of it, and again, I'll provide testimonies to that. And lastly, we are proposing some new signage. In conjunction with the entrance, we are proposing three signs. All of the signs will meet the size requirements of the zone, however, because the walls and the property, or the walls to the property are fairly close to the property line, they do not meet the setbacks, and so we are seeking to have an approval for three signs, as you see them on the exhibit that we handed out. They are all going to be under 25 feet, and we'll have testimony as to the dimensions of those signs. With that outlined, I would like to call, as my first witness, Mr. Truhan.
Was it? It's on.
I believe it's on now.
Right. Mr. Truhan, do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Truhan, what is your occupation?
I'm a professional civil engineer.
And you're licensed in the state of New Jersey?
I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Delaware, and Maryland at the present time.
How long have you been so licensed?
Over 35 years.
Your engineers accepted.
Thank you. Mr. Truhan, your firm was retained by the new owner of the property to develop the amendments to the site plan, is that correct?
That's correct.
The original development plans, in conjunction with this application, were prepared by Reynolds Engineering?
That's correct.
Okay, and what was your charge in designing some of the amendments to the site plan? What were the intended changes of the redeveloper for this project?
Well, there were several changes, the main change being to enhance the entrance way to the project. And several meetings and designs were prepared and discussed with the professionals to arrive at the entrance way that is presented this evening.
Can you briefly indicate to the board the changes that are being proposed in this application, and compare it to what was in the original application?
As Mr. Lanfrith stated in the beginning, this project was approved in 2005 under the application name of Somerset Douglas, contained 25 buildings, which totaled about 114 units. He discussed the entrances that were designed at that time. There was an entrance off of Douglas Street, which resulted in a street width of 36 feet. There was a entrance way off of Melissa Meadow Townhouse, which was mentioned before, and also another entrance and access through Prospect Street. Since that time, there were two main buildings constructed, if I could change these... These buildings were at the, basically at the intersection of Alarica Lane and Alfred Street. There's two buildings that contain eight units. Those are the only buildings that are constructed at the present time. The majority of the infrastructure is already in. Storm drains have been constructed, sanitary sewer, public water, and Stab Base has been constructed from, in the vicinity of the entrance of Douglas, from Douglas Street along Alarica Court, to about several hundred feet from the Melissa Meadow subdivision. Also, the area that we're talking about here is contained within about a half an acre. As stated previously, these two buildings will be removed, open space will be constructed in its place, a tot lot will be constructed, and also eight parking spaces. The entrance way will be revised to contain a... A decorative stone wall, which will run along Douglas Street and into the entrance way. That stone wall will vary in height from three feet to approximately six feet. As stated previously, three signs will be located on that wall, one facing Douglas Street, one facing Somerset Street, and the other sign will be to the north of the proposed new entrance. The new entrance has been designed to provide for visitors, a separate access for visitors, a separate access for residents, and another exit for people leaving the complex. As a result of discussions with your professionals, it was determined that a 15-foot-wide lane would be required for the exit, so that fire vehicles and emergency vehicles could easily leave. The area where we have visitors and residents is about 24 feet in width. These areas also include two islands, and a distance between the islands of about 18 and a half feet, which would allow a U-turn to be made for visitors that cannot proceed through the gated area. Gates will be located at the second island farthest from Douglas Street, and also there'll be a five-foot by eight-foot guardhouse that is located in this area, on the second island farthest from Douglas Street. There were several discussions concerning the guardhouse, that, with your professionals feeling that it was important that the guardhouse not be located in the storm drainage easement, so we did remove that, and then the guardhouse is now at least six inches or a foot away from that easement, and away from the storm drainage facilities. The distance from the curb on Somerset Street to the new entrance way, curb to curb, is 97 feet. The distance from the center line of Somerset Street to the center line of the new entrance way is 149 feet, and I believe waivers are required, will be required for that.
For the record, the RSIS standards are 150 feet and 100 feet, is that correct?
Yes.
So we are seeking a one-foot waiver for the one dimension, and about a two-and-a-half foot waiver for the other, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and part of that was because Mr. House had requested that we create additional width in the fire lane, and we moved the driveway further or closer to Somerset Street, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and although you have been pointing out on Exhibit A2, we actually have the full-scale drawings, which are very hard to read... drawings, which are very hard to read in A3, and A3 does depict those changes, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And in essence, the changes are just a shift of everything approximately two feet closer towards Somerset Street, and making sure that the guardhouse is out of the easement?
Yes, those are the two important issues, because the original design, one of the original designs that we proposed was an aisle width of 13 feet, and the fire department was concerned about that, so we did revise it and move that entrance way down.
In the, one of the other things that I had indicated is the connection between Melissa Meadows and the Somerset Gate Project. How is that going to be handled if the board agrees that there should be an emergency access only?
Well, there's gates that are proposed, and as a result of discussions, I believe as recent as this morning, they will be activated with sirens.
Okay. And so, they would be available for access for police, fire, or ambulance?
Absolutely.
Okay. Can you briefly indicate to the board, so, the sign variances that we are seeking? I indicated that the signs will all be 25 feet, which is in conformance with the ordinance, but there are sign variances that we are seeking as far as the distance of the signs from the property line. So, can you point out where those signs are and what the distances are from the property line?
Right. The sign facing Somerset Street will comply with the ordinance as far as square footage and size. The distance between the sign and the property line is approximately 18 feet.
And actually, isn't that sign set back further than the previously approved sign?
That is correct.
Okay. So, we've actually moved it back further off of that intersection?
The second sign that faces Douglas Street, I believe, is 22 feet. And the sign that is located to the north, northwest of the proposed new access and entrance to the project is about 11 and 1/2 feet.
Okay. And again, they are distance variances and not size variances, correct?
That is correct.
Also, in my opening remarks, I had indicated that there is a proposed change to the treatment of the fence along Route 27. Can you indicate to the board what is being done to that fence?
A new fence is being constructed for a length of approximately 750 feet, and it was determined that a fence that long, without any breaking in that fence, would not be really acceptable. So, what we've done is that about every 40 feet on center, there's jogs in that fence with landscaping to break that, to break that effect.
And in the original plan, there were street trees proposed along Route 27, and those were approximately every 40 feet?
Yes.
And so, actually, where the jogs are, we're actually going to keep the street trees and then move the fence behind the street trees, is that correct?
That is correct.
And also, there is additional landscaping that is being proposed along Route 27 to, again, break up the view of that fence?
Yes. And there's also an 18-inch wall that runs along Somerset Street.
Okay. When all of the dust settles, the original plan that was prepared by Reynolds had a significant amount of landscaping. We have now tweaked the plan and are here with a revision to the plan. With our revised plan, are we taking away any of the landscaping that was previously approved by this board?
Absolutely not.
Okay. And actually, in certain areas, there'll be some enhancements to the landscape plan because we have additional space within which to work, is that correct?
That is correct, an additional open space also.
Okay. And lastly, can you briefly discuss with the board that new open space area and what's being proposed in there?
The new open space will contain a tot lot, and also eight additional parking spaces. It is not anticipated to have lighting on that tot lot area. We do not really want to encourage nighttime use of that, so there will not be lights there. However, in the original proposal, there were two lights, one, I believe, in the vicinity of where we have the new parking proposed, and also in the vicinity of the aisle closest to Douglas Streets. Those lights are approximately 15 feet in height, and will be constructed in basically the same location.
And one of the staff reports does require that you provide all of the standard lighting detail to make sure there's appropriate illumination, and we will agree to do that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to review the staff reports that were generated in conjunction with this application?
Yes, I have.
Okay. And I'm going to direct you first to the report of Mark Healy, Director of Planning. That report dated January 29, 2013. Mr. Healy actually, in the first couple of pages, outlined a lot of the things that we discussed this evening as to what is being proposed. With respect to the review comments that are set forth in Mr. Healy's report, can we comply with all of the requests that were made by Mr. Healy in his report?
Yes, we will comply with his requests. He discusses the signs and their locations and the distances from the property line, which we discussed previously. He discusses the shrubs and the plantings along Somerset Street, which we discussed and presented, that they will be enhanced. We presented a sample picture of the guardhouse, so that everyone better understands what is being really proposed there. We will comply with the previously approved lighting plan. He questions when the fencing along Somerset Street would be installed, and we are stating that that fencing will be installed as part of Phase 1, in the initial part of the construction of the contract. He had a comment about the existing pole with the floodlights at the intersection of Douglas Street and the entrance way. We're stating that those floodlights are there for security purposes at the present time and will be removed. The color of the proposed fence is white, he questioned that. Talked about the AS-Built survey that's being currently performed on the site. That is preliminary and ongoing, and as the results of that, of those AS-Builts occur, we will present them to your professionals and engineering department for their approval.
Thank you. You mentioned in reviewing Mr. Healy's comments, phasing. Did members of RedeV group have a meeting with the township, along with members of your staff, to talk about a phasing plan for the project?
Yes, they did, and we have the phasing plan basically outlined in the documents we presented for approval this evening.
So, one of the other things that we will also be requesting of the board is to approve the phasing plan that was discussed with the township staff?
That is correct.
Okay. And that phasing plan was reviewed by fire, and sufficient improvements will be made, which will allow emergency vehicles, again, to access and maneuver the site at each phase of the project, is that correct?
That is correct.
Regarding, Peter, regarding Mark's comment on Page 4, 1H, about the shade trees over the underground detention system, since I defer to engineering on this matter?
We will remove them.
Okay. And they'll just be planted elsewhere?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's kind of a thing where I know what the answer is, but I'm not an engineer, so I'm not going to say remove them. And I know Carl's going to say, get those trees off of the detention.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, because, you know, when they say, you know, you'll comply with everything, and you've done a great job of detailing how you're going to do that, that was one thing that compliance was not.
Consider those, consider those trees gone.
Okay.
Did you also have an opportunity to review the report of Carl Houck, Assistant Township Engineer, dated January 31, 2013?
Yes.
Can you briefly go through, and we can comply with most of the comments, there are a couple of things we do need to discuss, can you briefly run through that report?
Yes. Items 1 through 3, we concur. Item 4, he requested an amended traffic report be submitted, and I believe we have.
With respect to that traffic report, that traffic report was prepared by Dolan and Dean, correct?
That is correct.
And that traffic report discussed the queuing of vehicles as they enter the site. And with the redesign that we did today, how many vehicles can queue before that gate before they back out onto the roadway?
The way it's personally designed, four vehicles.
Okay. And Ms. Dolan's report, and she was at the meeting this morning, opined that that is more than adequate to handle both the residents and the guests that may come to the subject property, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Please continue.
He questioned the proposed signs, and once again, we're stating that those signs will comply with your ordinance in the location and square footage. He had concerns about the AS-Built plans being prepared, and as I stated previously, they are ongoing, and as soon as that gets completed, that will be submitted to your engineer for his review. He questioned the location of the vortex unit, which was apparently somewhat included in one of the storm drainage easements. We will relocate that or modify it in such a way that it will be, it will be out of that easement. It's not, there isn't a good portion of that unit in easement, and that can be done fairly And the other items, we basically concur.
All right. There are two items that need to, I just need to very briefly touch on. Obviously, I shouldn't say obviously, when this project was approved, all of the units were created by a filed plat, so that there are 114 units plus the open space and road unit. We are now eliminating eight of those units, so we will agree, as required by Mr. Houck, to provide an amended final plat. We will be merging that new open space area into the existing common or open space area that currently exists. The other item that I need to discuss, and it probably needs to be discussed with engineering more than this board, but I do want to indicate to the board that I want to have that discussion. We have committed with the redevelopment authority to try to move this project and get these units built and marketed, and we're trying to move them as for-sale units. Right now, we posted a performance guarantee. There is still some language that needs to be resolved with Mr. Raynon, which I hope will be resolved within the next few days. He's currently away. But once that bond is posted, basically, performance guarantees will be in place. We are revising, basically, the entrance to the property. Once we do that, we can start work on the entrance. However, once the bond is in place, the rest of the project and the rest of Phase 1 can be developed pursuant to the approved plans. And just so the board is clear, I'm going to request of the engineering department that once the bond is approved, that we can continue to develop the project as per the approval, where there are no changes to the plan. To the extent that the, you know, we have a new tot lot, to the extent that we are going to raise some buildings, and we're changing the entrance, we will not do any work in that area until the final plans have been revised and approved. But if there are some work that can be done in other areas of the project which are bonded for, we would like the ability to continue to move forward with the project without having to wait for a sign-off for that front piece. I will have that discussion with engineering, but I just wanted on the record that I think that's, this is a little unusual. In the normal circumstance, the project has not commenced, we're amending it, and obviously, we can't start till everything is approved. But basically, everything is approved, other than the changes we are proposing this evening. Other than that...
Can I ask a question about number 6 in Carl's report? I mean, you do have all this drainage in, I assume that the slopes are not zero.
If things need to be cor...
Well, I guess Mr. Truhan can answer.
We have found some areas that need to be looked at again. Our survey crew has to go back out there and double-check, sometimes triple-check, the inverts that are obtained. Once we confirm that and determine that indeed, these are the final inverts, that they have been obtained correctly, then we will analyze the system and recommend changes where required to comply with the current regulations.
Which is nothing less than 0.5, I believe.
That is correct.
I have a question about the fence along Somerset Street?
Yes.
You said it's going to be 700 feet long?
750 feet long.
And it's going to be white?
It's going to be white.
What's it made of?
It's a plastic fence.
Linen?
All right. And so, you're just going to have shrubbery every 40 feet?
No, all along, the fence will be, it'll be landscaped, but instead of having a solid fence for 750 feet, which we felt would look awful.
It would.
Every 40 feet, we're going to create a jog, eight foot in, eight foot across, eight foot back out, with landscaping and a tree in that area.
I noticed in your entrance way, you have these nice stone columns with the white tops and the...
Yes.
Would it be possible to put a few of those along this 700 feet to help break it up and make it, spruce it up a little, make it look a little nicer?
I think discussions probably should be held with the architect and the client to see if that could be done. It is a possibility, whether or not...
I just think that the 750-foot-long white plastic fence would be horrible, and what you're describing really isn't enough to make it look other than what it is. And it needs a little something more to match this very nice entrance way that you have.
I think perhaps in appropriate condition, first of all, what they are proposing is a significant improvement from what was approved. Because basically, what was approved was basically a solid 700-foot-long stretch...
And that would be horrible.
...with some shrubbery and trees in front. But they're going to improve it, again, by jogging it a little bit more to break it up, and then they're also, the actual design of the fence is changing. It's going to have, instead of just a six-foot-tall, is it six-foot-tall?
Yes, it's six-foot-tall.
Kind of just standard stockade, the top foot or so is going to have, is going to be a kind of a lattice.
A lattice.
Appearance.
A lattice design.
So, the fence itself is going to be more attractive. But I think maybe rather than trying to design it on the spot, perhaps in appropriate condition would be, you know, that they'll, you know, confer with the applicant and with the architect, and see if there's some appropriate design that can incorporate this stone feature somehow along the frontage.
I mean, it doesn't even have to be every 40 feet, it can be every 80 feet, but something that will tie...
Yeah. Ms. McGyver, just so you understand, there will be a stone wall all along Route 27, the fence will sit on top of the stone wall, so it's not just going to be fence sitting on the ground. So, there is stone there already.
There will be stone, but the way this wall comes up into those columns is very attractive. And if there's some way you can continue that theme along Route 27, will enhance the attractiveness.
Not with the corrupting the project. You know, again, we'll sit down with Mr. Healy, and perhaps something could be done to maybe make it, break it up.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, if I may. How does the guardhouse...
Are you sure with your testimony, are you witnesses?
I'm done.
Okay. So, then, no, I just want to know...
I want to make sure we were okay with asking.
Go ahead, Jim. Okay, go ahead, Jim. I just want to make sure.
No, I understand, sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt you.
No.
I figured Steele was doing it, so it must be okay.
Yeah. No, it is. I was trying to...
These ladies can do things we can't. Anyway, the guardhouse, how does that work? Is it a key-card approach, or there's not a guard on duty all the time?
No, there is... No, there is...
And then, when you answer that whole question, what do you do when a visitor shows up? How do they access? Because we have a very limited stacking room, as you said.
There are two things that are happening. First of all, the guardhouse will be there for decorative purposes and also to house some equipment, so it serves a function, but will not be manned. There is a keypad to access the site. The residents just can go right through, they'll have like an easy pass or some other way where their gates just go up. If the visitors are coming, they will go to a call box and call, and if there's no one available, obviously, the gates will not open, and then they would back out and leave.
You're visiting me, I will open a gate for you.
Yes, yes.
All right. I just was wondering how that would work. Now, you also...
You wouldn't open it for me, but somebody else...
You're connecting to another development.
Is there going to be a way, that's a great question, Jim, just raised. So supposing I'm going to visit you, you're not home, you can buzz me in, another car comes and bats me, is there some turnaround?
Yes.
Do you even get out of there?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that's all right. Okay, no, it's not...
That 18-foot space between the aisles, I guess, is for the U-turn, right?
Okay.
Yes, that's the purpose of that 18 and 1/2-foot space between the aisles.
Great.
Just one question, I'm not, I wasn't around when that got approved originally. The other development that you're tying into or butting, that's where exactly? On the next corner?
It's on Henry Street, and has, I think it's two accesses to that site from Henry Street.
And this emergency drive that you're talking about is going to connect from this project to that one?
To Henry Street.
And where is that going to be? If I come in this driveway, let's say it's a fire company, and they respond here, can they get through, and how do they do that?
Let me, I'll bring it over to you, Jim.
You better, because I won't see it from here. There's a lot of things going crazy here, not just, anyway.
This is our, again, this is the entrance.
Right. Yeah, okay, gotcha, yeah, okay. Gotcha.
It's a straight shot right there.
Mm-hmm, okay. Now, and how is it blocked? Where are you going to have your...
Right at the property line, there will be a gate.
Oh, this is your site, right here?
This is our site, and this is North Meadows over here.
Yeah, see, I'm looking at these plans and thinking that, okay, it's all right, got it, got it, thank you. And there'll be a knox horn or something, right?
Mr. Chairman, a question about the, or just further clarification on that entrance. You'd indicated that, based on the discussions this morning, you're going to basically move it a little bit closer to Somerset to get the aisle lanes worked out. Weren't you always supposed to move it a little bit into the site more to get more queuing as well? Wasn't that, was that part of the discussion?
The way, the way it is set up now, there is queuing for four cars. As was discussed this morning by Ms. Dolan, the state standards for a gated community where access is on a state highway only requires 50 feet from the public right-of-way, or the state right-of-way in that case. Here, we are approximately 60...
About 80 feet.
So there's enough stacking for four cars. We're beyond the requirements of the state regulations, and quite frankly, there are no local regulations regarding the distance for queuing. But again, if there's access off a state highway, it's only supposed to be 50 feet. We're beyond that.
There was a meeting this morning, I was a few minutes late for that, I think I may have missed that portion of the discussion, but it is my understanding that the agreement that was reached with staff was that you were going to add more queuing space, and that doesn't seem to be what I'm hearing.
Well, we've had several designs before, and one of the designs, I believe, had stacking for three cars, and this is now increased to four.
My understanding was, is, that there was a meeting this morning...
Correct.
And that everybody left that room, the applicant and the staff, with an understanding of certain modifications that were going to be made.
Correct.
That you were going to PDF that to staff in the afternoon so we can kind of take a look at it before the meeting. We didn't get that. And now I'm hearing, you're basically agreeing to make the one change, but you're not agreeing to do the other change. That's what I'm hearing.
Well...
If I'm wrong, please correct me.
Yeah, we went from, the way it works now is we can get four cars. We had three this morning, so we did move it slightly, and that's about as far as we can move it.
So you did make a change?
Yes.
Okay, so you moved where the gates are further into the site?
Yes.
To some degree?
Yes. And just with the PDF, and we do have the full drawing here if either you or Mr. Hauck needs to see it. Mr. Mallison, who was at the meeting this morning, worked on the changes all day, he PDFed them to my office to get them to you. For some reason, my office did not get them, and that's why you didn't get them. I haven't seen them, I understand all my clients got them, but I didn't get them. But again, we did move it so that we have the stacking now for four vehicles, we had three vehicles before.
I must have misheard you, because I think, I was hearing that you didn't move it to create more stacking, but now you're indicating that you did. So what I would suggest to the board is that there be a condition, obviously, staff has not seen the details, they're basically just tweaking this design, staff hasn't seen that, so it would have to be subject to staff review to make sure they're doing what they agreed to, and that it addresses the different concerns that staff raised.
Excuse me, from the standpoint of stacking, are we talking about the entire four vehicles being stacked within the property lines? Are we talking about from the curb line to the gates, or...
They'll be stacked within the property line.
So from the property line, so there's still another 10 or so feet before we get to the curb, assuming it's, I don't know what the right of...
Approximately, yes.
So, okay, so they'll be blocking the sidewalk, but they'd be out of the street for another car, that'd be five then, correct? That'd be five cars. And the way you would describe, well, the way you describe the operation of homeowners, they go, they whip it, it's gate open therein, so the ones that are going to be stacking are people who are trying to come in, and there's nobody home, they buzz the buzzer, and they have to wait, then go get out of there.
Or waiting to be buzzed in, and that's assuming you're going to have four people waiting to be buzzed in at one time, which is...
Well, big parties, you know. It's all right, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? Bob?
Well, just one thing, which I'd actually seen this at the redevelopment agency. With the guardhouse, with the unmanned guardhouse being moved further into the site, it may not be any problem at all. This rendering shows a wall of windows on an unmanned building, which just seems to me to be a terrible target for anyone of ill will. And so perhaps, I know we're not passing really on the design of the guardhouse, but that might just be something to keep in mind when it is designed.
We'll paint the windows. We're artists, and paint them like mural.
Or we'll be replacing windows on a regular basis. Hopefully, that's not the case. I mean, hopefully, there was a deterrent. But your comment is well noted, and I think you did mention it to me at the redevelopment agency meeting, and I did pass that comment on to my client. We have not changed any of the things that we showed you last week at the redevelopment agency.
Our attorney has pointed out to me that for your sign variance, your justification for the number of signs would be...
Mr. Lanfrere, if we could just get testimony for the need for site identification for making that turn?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, we felt that it would be important to have the signs located at the intersection of Somerset Street and Douglas Street, and also a sign at the new revised entrance, and a sign on the other side of the entrance, which I think was originally proposed previously.
And you believe that'll help the traffic identify the actual entrance into the development?
I think it's required.
Okay.
Fair enough. Ted?
I think Mr. Lanfrere at one point mentioned a keypad, will be a keypad for entry that, say, a guest could be told ahead of time, "Enter 2143," and you'll be let in. So that's really better than having to wait for the homeowner to buzz them in.
If there are no other board questions, we can open the meeting to the public. I'll make that motion.
I will, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is now open to the public for comment. Just come to the dais and be sworn in, and let us know your name and address.
Just raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, and please state your name and address.
My name is Ellis Perry. I live on 130 Prospect Street. And the whole time we've been sitting here, we haven't heard anything about the backside, where I live at, where the fence is at, and what's going to be done in the back.
Nothing is changing back there from what was originally approved, so everything that was originally approved at the terminus... See, now you're taxing my brain from eight years ago. There is an emergency access that is proposed back there so that if an emergency vehicle comes down Prospect, they can get into our project. There is no, the projects are not connected, there is no other connection to Prospect Street. There is, I think in the original plan, there's landscaping along that property line, but whatever was originally approved is still going to be constructed. We're not changing anything there.
Because we had, I had came to a couple of meetings before, but anyway, they had said that they was going to try to make the back end just as good. I've been there all these years, waiting for somebody to come and take care of the property, because we've taken care of our property to the best of our abilities. So we want the property to be just as nice on the front end when you're looking to come in, as well as on our side.
Every commitment that was in the original approval is going to be honored, and all of the landscaping that was proposed there will be installed, so there are no changes being proposed there.
And even though, and we are also concerned about things as far as people coming in, because you're not going to have no security inside. So we're figuring the same thing, there's maybe a little bit more trouble that's going to be flowing through the area now, once y'all get your apartments and get everything up that y'all are going to have. So the access that's coming from that end is not going to be opened up, it's going to stay closed. We're not going to have no access.
There's no traffic from our site going onto Prospect.
All right, thank you. And just to follow up, Peter, sorry, hang just one second. The emergency access from Prospect to the development, what's going to be the barrier? Is it going to be a bollard, or is it going...
That was a bollard.
Okay.
John hasn't asked that that be changed, so that was on the original plan.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give, the board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your name.
Marie Bowler, 99 Dunbar Street. Who will be maintaining the property between Dunbar Street and the fence that's currently there now, the back end of the property?
Township.
That's municipal?
Yeah.
Okay. Because it hasn't been maintained, that's why I didn't know who was doing the access on that one. Okay, because I've been living there several, you know, 15 years now, and very rarely has it been cut. See? I have witnesses. I have witnesses.
Terrible.
I think you need to contact, over here, you need to contact the township Department of Public Works.
Okay.
Well, unfortunately, this board can't do anything, that's just...
Ted, can you surface this issue to Township Board, Vornlocker?
Who's the councilman for that district?
Oh, that would be Carl, Carl Wright.
No, Vasinella, I think, Jim.
Actually, maybe it's, yeah, it would be Vasinella.
Is it? Oh, I thought it was Ward 4, no?
The boundaries must have changed, I'm not paying attention.
So, Jim, Vasinella is the council person?
Because he's for Demont Wayne, I didn't think it went all the way...
It's a great figure, it goes around.
Okay.
Things got redistricted, I think it used to be four.
No, I think it's always been five.
I just assumed that was just...
No, Henry Street, I know, is in the fifth district.
Well, these boundaries never make sense.
It's the fourth.
Do you know who the councilman is down here where you are?
I think it would be Vasinella.
Oh, okay.
See, I'm not the only one.
They call Public Works, you have to go anywhere.
Well, you know, that needs to be surfaced to the township manager. Mark, we can escalate it, I think that's fair. Just give me an idea of what's there. What needs to be, is it trash?
The weeds are like this high.
Is there any, like, actual trees, or is it just a mowing will do the trick?
It's just mowing, basically, and I don't know if there's any tree branches or anything else that's down there, because it's also a lot of poison ivy.
Okay.
So it's...
It doesn't seem too difficult to get cleaned up.
No, it doesn't seem, but it hasn't been done.
Okay.
So, okay.
I'll pass that along.
All right, thank you.
I'll follow up with Bob Vornlocker myself as well.
Great, thank you.
It's just too simple not to get taken care of.
Yeah, it is real simple, but, you know, simple never gets done.
True.
All right, I have another question. There's a fence currently along Dunbar Street, is that going to be replaced or repaired? Because there are holes in it now, it's a chain link. And I know I've seen kids go through it, play on the property. It'd be along Dunbar Street.
Supposedly a fence might be there. The gate to here, we're over, it's chain link.
Chain fence, a new chain fence with those privacy slats.
Oh, okay. Will it forfeit?
It forfeit.
Okay.
So that fence is going to be replaced, with the new fence and landscape?
So far back at across, we haven't focused on that section yet.
Yeah, hoping it was going to get replaced, because there are holes in it, and there are kids going in there, into the lot to play. I've seen them crawl through. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I think, I think the point would be to replace the fence now, not when you get to building the back end.
We will try to get to it as soon, we need to look at that, Dr. Chase, we try to replace it sooner rather than later, but...
You said the other fence was going to be taken care of in Phase One, right?
All along Somerset Street.
At the second fence, the Phase One, I would think, no?
The only concern I have is that this construction may cause a problem there. If we put it in, then we're going to have to damage it during construction. We'll take a look at it, and I'll have my client see if he can do it. Again, it wouldn't make sense to put it in and then have to construct there, and it's going to get beat up.
No, but it may be a safety issue of children accessing the site.
Well, again, I mean, again, it could also be patched right now to prevent access. And obviously, access by people when the site was not manned was a problem. There were a lot of thefts, a lot of the work that was done was ripped out. Obviously, we're going to have a presence on the site, so hopefully, with us working there and doing things that we have to do, we hopefully will not have the problems that were there in the past.
Is there anybody else from the public who would like to comment? If not, make a motion to close.
Mr. Chairman, seeing no one coming forward on this hearing, I would move that this public hearing be closed.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything in summation, Peter?
Unless you just want me to outline the issues, no. I think the board can see that we've taken great pains to reanalyze this. I think what we're proposing here will be an improvement, and hopefully, get this project completed, as it is one of the gateways to Franklin Township. But we would ask for the approval, the variances for the sign, the relief on the affordable housing units, and payment of the fee and lieu thereof, and all of the other things that we've requested.
Relief on the driveway?
And the RSIS relief on the driveway.
Make a motion to approve with those stipulations that were just stated, and that the applicant work with our staff, in particular, since this... work with our staff, in particular, since this is a gateway to Somerset Franklin Township, that the fence be looked at carefully by the staff.
Second the...
Okay, call the roll.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Cecile MacGyver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
James Pettit?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Charles Alderman?
Yes.
Charles Oniaka?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Think that's all we have tonight?
What's that?
Mark, are we done? Okay. Motion to adjourn. Okay, second. We are adjourned.